January the 7th, 2019. This time we wanted to have a moment of prayer. God, we give you respect and acknowledge you as our Creator and Provider. Help us, Lord, to accomplish our goals while displaying character. We ask that you be with our police forces, our fire department, our rescue teams, as well as our servicemen and women here and overseas. We ask of Jesus. Amen. Pleasure to lead you through this.
Where do we begin? To the right of the United States of America. And to be repented for what sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't have a copy of the January 7th, 2019 amendment before you are there in Texas. Yes, I mean to amend the new business to add Section B yearly appointments and Section C executive session. I'd like to get, have the, our proof for the minutes for the December 3rd, 2018 council meeting. Make a motion to approve.
I'll say it.
All in favor? Yes, thank you. Okay. Department reports. We have a complaint. Ms. Nancy McCollum of the Rivas Mountain Road is wondering why we do not have any fire hydrants. This is the second complaint we've had, Council, on fire hydrants for Rivas Mountain Road. They said there's about two miles of road that are without any hydrants of any type. So, I've got a note here to get with Tim Prather to see if there's anything, if he has anything planned for 2019, or adding any of that, or, you know, if there's been any, any type of thought given to it.
We've got property up on top of that mountain. I know when, if we end up building there, we have to have a well, so there isn't water service that runs down part of it anyway. And I don't know if that has anything to do with it or not. I don't know how far in the water service there is.
I don't know how far. I bet it don't cross the ridge. I know it don't go up on the mountain.
But that could be long. I don't know what part you're talking about.
That's in the power of Rivas Mountain.
Just barely. I guess that's a little second thought, so I think, right after that.
Cherokee Water Authority would take it on anybody would.
I'll make some phone calls on that. The last meeting we had, we also had a complaint regarding a hole that needed to be filled back here behind, there was two holes actually, back behind us where the marble plant is at. So there was, and I've got some pictures of it. Ricky took some. And it basically looks like it's just really sunk in and washed down a little bit. I'll get with Mike Hadland. I think that may be one of the roads that's on our, on our list, actually, to, to be reviewed. So, in the meantime, I've asked Ricky to get some stuff and fill, fill the one small one. The one that just dips down, he's not able to do it. And then there was another complaint regarding the brushes being trimmed and removed. And I spoke with Ricky, and he's going to be taking care of that brush that's right here at the corner of, I believe it's across from the marble company where Nogga Passes at. It's just kind of overgrown. You can't even hardly walk between them now. Only thing is, the easement, do we have everything we need now to, to take to the, to the.
Yeah, I already took it to.
Deal. So, we'll give it, go ahead and give Mr. Payne a call. Have you done that yet?
It's going to be two weeks before it's recorded. And then they send it straight to Emma Colwell. They haven't started recording anything from 2019 yet.
Okay. I'll go ahead and give Mr. Payne a heads up that that's kind of.
Tell him what you did.
Yeah. And.
And work today.
That way he can get it scheduled. Okay. And I made a phone call to the tree folks, Kil Murray, and also to Mr. Monford's office. And we, James and I are going to meet with them on Thursday. If you want to come down, I feel like you're welcome to run, talk with them about the trees and everything, and get a firm contract.
Yeah, Mike can give you.
Yeah. We're going to get a firm contract from them, and then go ahead and, and we'll put some milestones together for it. And that's where we are with that. Lieutenant, go ahead.
Wash out of here on Cherokee. Did they ever come check the pipe layers?
Yeah, that's bull.
They did. And they fixed it.
And the oil is running, it's still in there. Okay.
I need to, I do, I did get a complaint from, what was that guy's name that's on the corner there, James, about the, where the railroad thing is at? It's water, there's water running under his house?
Trout's, the man's name that lives there.
Buddy.
Buddy Trout.
I sent an email. I'm going to go ahead and, I'll follow up on that one.
But I checked on that. No, George Markle owns. The railroad, they just, I own the railroad going down through there. They don't email over that way to the city of Nelson.
Who don't?
Railroad. It's on Evans Beach, where the Boy Scouts will be, or manches are over there. And that belongs to George Markle. And they said we could tie it down and, and do away with it. There's no Boy Scout troop here no more. It's got a plaque on it, you know, but we saved that plaque.
And I'll get on that, so.
Yeah.
Well, there's a drainage before you hit the railroad tracks, I think. I mean, there's only one of that.
There's one, you know, out there, where you go down School Street.
Where Mr. Trout's house is, there's, it looks like it's been maybe.
Looks like a wet weather spring coming out near his house.
And I got one behind mine on that.
Okay. Anybody have anything else? We'll move on to our police report by Lieutenant Simmons. Welcome, Lieutenant Simmons.
Good evening, everybody. So, we had, counting the traffic stops, we had 13 called. Our major calls were December 11th, we had a two-car accident at, in front of 1612 Nelson Road. No injuries. We found a suspicious vehicle at Universal Stair. After hours, it was checked and documented. There was nobody around it, and it was gone the next day. We had a zone patrol request for a possible suspicious activity near the ballpark, but everybody was gone before we got there. And it was an anonymous call.
It wasn't?
It was. It came in, that's a number one, is an anonymous call. So, I don't know if you called it in, but. And then, as a result of last month's meeting, and we had, we had a couple complaints about speeding and traffic and so forth, so we upped our traffic enforcement and did 10 traffic stops in about two weeks. So, we made a good progress.
It's been sound, is it?
Yes, ma'am.
Awesome, thank you.
We'll, we'll continue that this month as well. Expect to see flashing lights.
So, seven unfinished business, Pickens County tax update. I know that, I was in working with Miranda last week, and the format, Miranda, I believe, is correct or incorrect? The format's off, correct?
Yes, the format, it doesn't work with our system. So, I've reached out to the Tax Commissioner, and he's getting all the, he's trying to sort of what he can do with his software.
I did get an email back to him. I sent him an email and told him that, you know, please make it a priority that we're, you know, grossly behind on our billing. And he sent an email back, says he's working right now. So, I'll, I'll do, might do diligence and check it from daily, though, as Miranda's sure will handle it.
Yeah.
Next up is new business. Ms. Stacy Doe, deliver, will be here to deliver our audit.
Well, we appreciate the fact that you let us come hang out with you, get the chair to do the audit. We always enjoy being down here. And, and as always, well, as, not as always, that's not a true statement, but as we have seen progress in the last couple of years, everything went very smooth. Sarah Leslie is the CPA that works with us. She's one of our staff auditors, and she works really closely. She gets in and does the dirty details, and has for a few years. And so, she hounded ginger a good bit. And, but she was very pleased with the fact that the books were in good shape. This is probably the most efficient we've been able to audit the City of Nelson in a few years, and so you are to be commended for the fact that the books were in good shape, the records were in good shape, and we very much appreciate that. All right, let's talk numbers. And I can get as detailed as you like, or I can do a 10,000 aerial view, a 10,000-foot aerial view, but let's start on page five. And let me start by saying, the books were in great shape. And just a reminder, we are not fraud auditors, we're not forensic auditors. So, when we come in, our job is to take your financial statements and test them. We vouch the documents behind those transactions, whether that's checks, or invoices, or deposit slips, bank statements, and the way you do business, agreements, any documents. We test them to make sure that if a lender, or grant agency, or constituent picks up this set of financial statements, that these numbers are as true as we know to make them. And we put our stamp of approval on them, so that it gives some assurance when someone takes your financial statements, that we've looked at and we've picked them apart, and these CPAs, these are the best numbers we know to give you. So, we give you different levels of an opinion. The best opinion we can give you is called an unmodified opinion. And that means there's no changes, and we feel like these financial statements are as correct as they can be. And that is the opinion that the City of Nelson got this year. So, you are to be commended for that as well. So, on page five, this is your balance sheet for just, for general fund and SLOST fund. I just wanted to point out that, I know that we've had a lot going on, but last fiscal year and this fiscal year, we see the city financially getting on its feet, and getting a little stronger than it has been in the past. And, and so, we are encouraged by that. For a city this size, you have a good bit of liquid assets compared to your liabilities. And because you have the SLOST fund, you're in a very fortunate position. You don't have a lot of, you don't have any debt. And most cities this size are funding through Jifa and USDA bonds and those type of things. Their infrastructure, you know, your stormwater issue came up, and you'll be able to do that through SLOST. And, so, you're in, as far as your equity goes, and as far as your balance sheet goes, it looks strong for a city this size. And above that's because you're able to finance your own projects, and you don't have any debt. So, and your assets far exceed your liabilities, which are minimal, which is basic accounts payable. And you have a strong unaside fund balance, and that means that it is not reserved for any purpose in the general fund. And conversely, in the SLOST fund, all of that is reserved, since you have to adhere to those referendums. That SLOST cash continues to grow. And, but, I'm encouraged by the capital improvement document that you're working on, because that will be, we do need to use those SLOST funds. And so, I think that it's, I'm encouraged by the fact that you're formalizing that document, you'll have a plan to follow, and where to utilize those funds, and because the SLOST just continues to grow. So, you'll turn to page seven. This is your statement of revenues and expenditures for the general fund and the SLOST fund. You'll see that you actually ended the year at, with $84,000 more in revenue than you had in expenditures. So, that is because you had some overages in your revenue collections that compared to budget, and we'll talk about that in just a minute. And, but, overall, the general fund ended up with $84,000 more in revenue than you did expenditures. And in the SLOST fund, very minimal project-wise, so you ended up with $181,000 brought in in revenue compared to expenditures. Let's look at, actually, instead of looking at page nine, let's flip back to, one thing that the City of Nelson has always wanted to include in their financial statements that most cities do not, is on page 20. Starts on page 20. There's a summary statement in the front of your budget compared to your actual. And these back statements are optional, they're not required, but Nelson has always preferred to put these in here, because it gives a lot more detail as to what you're spending your money on, what your sources of revenue are, and what your expenditures are. So, when you start looking at budget to actual, these statements are better for you to look at, and they give you more detail. So, you budgeted $455,000 in your amended budget for revenue, but you actually collected $480,000. So, you collected $25,000 more than you budgeted. If you look, the bulk of that comes from the intergovernmental revenue section, and that is your local option sales tax came in higher than you budgeted, as did your title up or your tablet. So, those came in higher. That's not anything that you can technically control, it's just a gift, that it came in higher than you budgeted. So, that constitutes the bulk of all your revenues exceeded budget. Page 21 starts a detailed line item budget to actual by department. So, this shows you line item, what budget to actual was for those, as well as in total for general government, public safety, and then your public works. And so, you may want to take some time to look at this, because it gives you some good information, because these are now your final numbers. And when you're doing budget amendments and trying to do that type of thing, sometimes you don't have our journal entries in there. So, at the end of the day, on page 24, you'll see that your final budget was $461,000, but you only spent $396. So, you came in under budget for the year for general fund. I will say that one of our audit comments was actually related to the budget. We had very few comments this year, but one of the comments was related to the budget, and that is, your general fund budget has to balance. So, the original budget did balance, and that means your total revenues has to equal your total expenditures. Okay? And sometimes you don't have the projects or the revenue, whichever way, to make that balance, and so you just pull it from prior years, or you kind of reserve it for future years. So, there's a way to make it balance that way, if you, if you need to pull from reserves from, from prior years, or vice versa. And however, when we did, we had some expenditures in some departments that were unexpected, and, and we've talked about a lot of those in depth during the audit, and so a budget amendment was necessary. But when the budget amendment was prepared, it was just slightly off. It was $6,543 different, or something like that, so.
Is that to the good or to the negative? Part of either.
I believe we had more revenues than expenditures, but I could have, no, I'm sorry, we had more expenditures than revenues.
So, that, that would be rectified?
Well, there's really not anything you can do for fiscal year 18 at this point, but it's an easy fix for fiscal year 19, just to make sure that your revenues and your expenses are equal for the general fund. Now, that's not the case for SLOST, because SLOST is capital projects, though. So, and a lot of people try to make that one balance, because they think they all have to balance. But it's just general special revenue funds, which is not your SLOST fund. So, but that one will need to balance in the future. So, that was one of our, just one of our two comments. We had very few comments this year on the audit. So, that was, just point that out. The notes to the financial statements give a lot more detail to the information in your financial statements. It's worth reading. It gives you some information about your assets, and your minimum liabilities, and your equity. And you will see on page 19 of the notes, that there is a note disclosure actually about that budgeted, that budget balancing. So, that's where that stems from. Any questions on the actual financials? You'll see on page 25, that there is a schedule of projects constructed with your SLOST funds. The state of Georgia requires us to include this in your audit report, and this is the schedule that the state of Georgia also requires you to publish once in a calendar year. So, now that your audit is finalized, this is the schedule that you'll publish in the paper. It breaks your SLOST referendums down individually by county and by actual referendum. Talks about your original budget, and if you've made any changes in that budget, what you've spent in prior years, what you've spent in the current year, and the year total. And then it gives you a percentage of completion. So, this is just a good report for your constituents to see what your plans are, where you're at on those, and if you have completed SLOST referendums. And it also gives some accountability as to complying with state law on what you should be spending those funds for. And I will say that we had no SLOST issues this year. I feel like we deserve a round of applause or something. We got them all paid back, and we had no SLOST issues, so, and we were very pleased to see that. Okay, the last letter in the audit report is the internal control report, and this is when I mentioned the budget. This is where we come in, and we don't just look at your financial statements, we look at how you do business. We look at what policies you've set, and whether those policies have been followed, and if there's any room for improvement, even if it's not a finding, a lot of times we give some recommendations. I know Mary Green has been really good, just kind of pepper us with questions, and she has for about a year, and that's great. You know, how can I do this? How can I change this? How do people do this? And that's the stuff we like to see. We like to see that there, that you can recognize gaps, and that you can fill those gaps, and set new policies. And so, I think that that's great, and that's progress forward. But this is what that letter is really about, if we see gaping holes that maybe didn't get caught by the council, or caught by your staff, and we feel like there's some exposure to risk there, that something could happen, that wouldn't be detected. And I will tell you, we had major findings, but if you look on page 28, the first finding is segregation of duties. And to give you kind of the legend for how to interpret these, the first four numbers of a finding are the original year that it was given by our firm. So, we gave this finding in 2012. Now, what I will tell you is, I've worked with the City of Nelson since about 1998. When did we decide, James? It was a long time ago. We talked about this. So, I just told them myself on my age, didn't I? And, so, I started auditing here, and I think it was 98. And we gave this comment then. So, it's not that it was given, and then remedied, and given back. It's just that I came back to Publica County in 2012, and that's when I took the audit back over. So, this is the first year that our firm gave it to you again. But it, City of Nelson's had this comment for years and years. You're just so small. It takes four people in a finance office to clear this comment. So, but, what I do like is that you're closely involved in the finances here, and Mary Green and I had a conversation today about some of the changes that you've made after the fiscal year end, and changes in approval levels, and things like that, and changes in policies. And all of that is very encouraging. I think it's really important as a council with such a small staff, that you stay involved in the day-to-day finances, not just as councilors for your protection, but for Ginger's protection, or Miranda's, or whoever's here doing the financial work. It's a level of protection for them as well, to have a second set of eyes, and to be able to justify or confirm anything that they're doing. So, but you will probably have this comment, as long as you are still the small city of Nelson. But that is what that comment means. It just, duties should not overlap in the finance office to the point that exposes you to risk of something inappropriate happening, or something being reported incorrectly. The second comment, material adjustments and maintenance of general ledger. We gave this one for the first time in 2014. When we come in to do a set of financial statements, we are technically not supposed to make any journal entries that are material. We like to use that word in the auditing world, and that means it's not large enough that we feel like we need to bring it to your attention. Small adjustments are not a problem, but if we have to change any account balances by a large dollar amount, we technically could lose our independence, because the financial statements become ours. They become our numbers, and we've made those changes. So, in order to maintain our independence, we have to disclose in your financial statements that we did have to make adjustments. And this is a comment that can very easily be fixed, and, and we can, you know, talk to your staff, and Miranda easily could fix it by doing the year-end entries, when those, when those occur in June and July. So, and that's not a problem. That's not a problem. So, those were our only findings. So, we, we had a good year. And we really were pleased, as I mentioned before. And one of the things that we did talk about, that we did not include in your audit report, but it was, what appeared to be one of the big reasons for your budget amendment, was the overtime issue. And I have been asked about that. However, it wasn't an audit finding, but it did generate the, it did generate a budget amendment, but because the budget was handled, and we were able to cross of our Ts and dot our Is on the audit, and it did not end up in the audit report. So, we did test that, however, because I know that was a area concern. Do you have any questions for me? Any other questions, audit questions?
You don't do this again, Nick?
You'll have me. I feel like we've been everywhere, so surely you're real happy back.
So, with that said, I'd like to, I'd like to address the excessive overtime issue. It was 607 hours in one fiscal year. This is a case where the clerk and city manager, same person, self-reported, violated our city's policies. Our policy states that overtime, overtime is subject to council approval. I'll write that right here. It says, in this situation, so it says, on a case-by-case basis without precedence, and submitted for council, to the council floor approval.
Before being worked.
Before being worked. So, the action taken by the mayor and the council is that some things that we've done internally, is we've added a third check signer. The check signer will review all time cards, and verify all invoices, all check, and check out receipts and checks. I personally will be signing off on all time cards. The clerk position is a salary position, and it has been since, I believe, 2015, when Miranda was here. That had not changed, therefore, the council didn't, they weren't aware that the individual was charging overtime. It was a salary position. Our policy regarding overtime will be followed and enforced, and all overtime going forward will be approved by the council prior to working it. There are, there are times, like, when we're doing audits and things like that, that we will have overtime, and we know that, and we're aware of it, like, meetings and things, and we don't have a problem paying overtime for that. But 607 hours for a city this small, we do not have utilities, other than sanitation billing, is excessive, so, I mean, we recognize that. At this time, the city does not wish to incur expensive litigation, and we are continuing to review and improve our city's policies. That's my statement on that. And Stacy, I want to say thank you to, for your work this year on our audit. It sends a positive message out to, to the Nelson public, you know, that, that our council's doing what they're supposed to be doing, and doing a good job. Again, really appreciate your work and your efforts there, helping us move our city forward.
Yeah, we're very encouraged, and we're looking forward to, we're giving Miranda.
Yeah, I want to ask if there's anybody. Yeah, I want to ask if there's anybody out in the public that would like to ask a question, we've got a couple minutes.
Thank you.
Mike?
Stacy, I have a kind of a two-part, part of it is just an observation on your part, and the other is a hard question. One of the things I think that is sort of unique to the city, or our size, that you helped us through was to create a cash reserve account, in addition to normal reserves, we have a cash reserve account. I doubt that there are many small cities that have that, although, I leave that to you to tell us, but I think the councils should recognize that we've made a real effort to very conservatively manage the city's fiscal resources. The second part is a kind of question, one of the things in the policy, when we made that, was that we would use, at the end of the fiscal year, excess revenues that had been spent, which I guess we said, you said it's $25,000, and although we've got a $6,000 place, we've got to cover up, but, then the money would, should be transferred, if there is an excess, we were to try to fund the cash reserve account. And my question is, does that happen now, at the point of the audit, or does that happen at the fiscal year in June and July?
I think that my recommendation would be to wait for audited numbers. We change them significantly. So, if you were to fund that in June and July, your numbers would just be very different than how they shake out by the time we make all of our audit entries. So, I think that if you were to fund that, you would look.
To the future.
Mm-hmm. That would be my recommendation.
Okay.
Is that you'd want to use good, solid audited numbers, if you choose to do that. And I think that there's, when it comes to the cash reserve, that might be something that the council wants to look at, because I know when it was adopted, I mean, we, I remember going through that with Mike, and I think that it was a good policy, it's just that I think that there was some, I don't remember if it was, it was adopted, and then it was not adopted, so anyway, if the council wants to do that, and implement that, you probably just want to reaffirm that, maybe, in a, in a meeting with another vote, just to.
Yeah, we'll take a look at that when we start the budget review.
And that's, and something, and this is a fairly different council that went, then went through that with us, on a lot of those things, so it's just my recommendation, to remember that your best bet is to always document everything in the minutes. So, it's been an issue, not at this city, just at the city, in a lot of cities. You're managing, you're doing your day-to-day, and you're making decisions, and making things happen, but, it's so important, when we come in behind you, to be able to say something's right or wrong, we've got to see in the minutes that it's right or wrong. So, it's just really important to make sure, any action, whether it's changing personnel, changing policies, changing pay rates, salary to hourly, anything like that, really needs to be documented in the minutes, and if it's sensitive information, you can always document in a memo with your executive minutes that we can review, so just something to keep in mind.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, and if you'll excuse me, I'll go ahead and just step out, unless you think you.
No, I think you can stay for the whole.
That is the core.
I appreciate you working us in, thank you.
No problem, thank you.
Okay. Move on to our yearly appointments. So, we'll start by appointing a mayor pro town. All in favor? unanimous. Council yearly appointments, city clerk will be Ginger St. Germain, city attorney, Jeff Westbridge, municipal judges, Richard Jones, city solicitor is going to be Jeff Westbridge, and our city building inspector will be William Fortner, and we're adding Miranda McDowell as our financial manager. Next up is our executive session, can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll take it.
Can I get a motion to adjourn from the executive session?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll say it is adjourned.
All in favor? unanimous, thank you. All right, guys, we're going to go back to the appointments, I didn't realize they had to be voted on, let's run through these real quick. We voted on the mayor pro town, so vote on the council yearly appointments, city clerk would be Ginger St. Germain, can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I'll say it.
All in favor? unanimous, thank you. City attorney, Jeff Westbridge, can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I'll say it.
All in favor? unanimous. Richard Jones for our municipal judge.
Say it.
All in favor? unanimous. Jeff Westbridge for city solicitor, can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Say it.
All in favor? unanimous. William Fortner building inspector.
Motion to approve.
Say it.
All in favor? unanimous. Adding Miranda McDowell as our financial manager.
Motion to approve.
Say it.
All in favor? And our zoning ordinance, Mayor Green.
I don't know about that.
All in favor? unanimous, thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to recognize the people, Republic of Paris, anybody have anything for us?
Oh, no, we've already discussed it, for protesting, you pick it.
Welcome back, Keith.
Thank you, Keith Johnson. I want to just bring up the Kudzu again, sounds like Cherokee, it's dead, it'd be a good time to address it, and maybe some other areas in the city that if it was cleared a little bit, it would, you'd have a lot more open space where people could sit, and spend some time, or whatever, so.
And I basically dropped the ball on that, and I apologize, I will, I got a note here under my action items to get with Evan, to find out who he's using for that, and I think I did tell you that we are really looking to see if there's anything that can be done with that property, but I don't think, because of the valley, so, but, but it is possible that maybe we can at least get some, get a cutback somewhat while it's.
Evan used my office book.
He did our subject thing, I think.
Speaking of our, has anybody heard from Mr. Ross on our plumbing outback?
Maybe it was just a, I'm sorry. It's the same one, we thought it was fixed.
Hey, one of the things, this property down here that Evan had, Holcomb Grading, I think it was, is the one that did that down there for him, and he has the equipment, I would probably contact him in regards to the Kudzu.
Who's that?
Holcomb Grading.
The same thing, isn't it?
Love it.
Yeah, it's the same, same one.
Okay, gotcha.
I've got it if y'all need it.
Okay. Good deal. And then, just a note to the council, the other thing is, we got a. Proposal for Chad Jenkins. Yeah, he's got it, so we'll take a look at it tomorrow. He says he thinks it's good, it's only three things.
He says it's a broken little horn.
I have the vacuum pretty much every Monday.
Water, gas, and drink.
Being worth on that.
Being worth.
The water is actually, I'm happy to announce, the water is separate. So, the only thing left to do is the propane, and the natural gas will not come in until after the meter has been set, so they have to set the meter first, and then Green's heating and cooling will come in and split it, and that will be the end.
The power was already done.
Power is already done, yeah, water is now checked off that list, too.
Okay, anything else, guys, anybody else have anything for the council? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Say it.
All in favor? unanimous, thank you.